I'd like to call the November Pecosin City School Board meeting to order. First up, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance by Joseph Chapazie. Joseph will lead us in the pledge. Joseph is in the 5th grade in Ms. Austria Anders' class at Pecosin Elementary School. He is an SCA officer this year. Joseph loves to play sports. He swims, wrestles, plays baseball, football, basketball, but likes wrestling the best. He also loves to ride his bicycle. His favorite subject at school this year is geography. When he grows up, Joseph is going to be an athletic director where he will set up the schedules for games and help train the athletes. He wants to eventually be the athletic director for Pecosin High School. Joseph?
Wait. Okay. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, law and nation, under God, in liberty with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you, Joseph. Next is our inspirational reader. Hope Bartels will provide the inspirational reading. Hope is a 5th grader in Ms. Novy's class at Pecosin Elementary School. She is also an SCA officer this year. Hope loves to read and write. She writes songs, poems, and is currently working on writing two books. She likes to roller skate outside with her friends. Hope feels she has a connection with dogs and might like to be a dog trainer someday. Her own dog is named Penny, and she has taught Penny a few tricks. Hope?
Writing makes me feel free. It gives a part of me life that is only lively if I am writing. It makes me feel like me. Everyone should have something to make them feel that way, whether it's reading, math, creation, or imagination. It should open a drawer that only opens when you use the key. The key is happiness, relaxation. My point is, you should have something that makes you feel special or happy. For me, it's writing.
Thank you very much. Very nice job. Next up, our student presentation for the night, and Pecosin Elementary School's 3rd grade students from Ms. Heldis' class will be doing a presentation called "The Journey of the Monarch." Students are Isaac Dow Rimple, Ryan Thickeady, Baker Green, and Hannah Richard.
Third graders and the monarch. This fall, all 3rd grade students at Pecosin Elementary School participated in a special project involving the monarch butterfly. With the help of Ms. Pam Camblin, a master naturalist, each class raised their very own monarch caterpillars and transformed into monarch butterflies.
Our class. Our class was particularly lucky because we were able to raise two separate groups of monarchs. We received three chrysalises in the first round and a group of caterpillars in the second round. Altogether, we raised five monarchs this fall.
What makes the monarch special? East of the Rocky Mountains, monarchs make a 3,000-mile journey each year, migrating between Canada and Mexico. This is an incredible migration.
We had a great time caring for and releasing our monarchs. We hope that all our butterflies have a safe journey south.
And the kids did that themselves, so they did a great job, and hopefully our monarchs made it safely south. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Heldis, and thank you, boys and girls. That was very well done. Next up, do we have any additions or modifications to the agenda?
We do not.
Thank you. Next up is our recognitions, and I'd like to ask that all award recipients remain until the end of the recognitions, and we'll take a brief intermission to personally congratulate you. I'd like to invite Mr. Rex Evans and our four principals up front as well, please. And Mr. Evans is going to do a presentation for our local Kiwanis group. Any of the principals, if you could make your way to the front, please? Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Rex Evans, and I have the privilege this year of serving as the president of the Kiwanis Club of Pecosin. You probably don't see them, but there's 110 members standing behind me. Kiwanis has been active here in the community of Pecosin for over 40 years, and we value the opportunity to continue to support our public school system and the fine educators and administrators that lead the educational system. Tonight, I have the honor of presenting $1,000 checks to each of the principals. This is our way of saying that we value the work that they do in creating a positive learning environment for our children and our youth and advancing our educational system. We have a very good working relationship with the public school system. If you attend a Pecosin Seafood Festival, you'll probably see Pecosin's hard at work, the Kiwanis preparing barbecue and serving it to the attendees of the festival, and you'll also see Key Club members there and also Builder Club members from the middle school, Key Club from the high school. So, we have an active role in sponsoring a Key Club at the high school, a Builders Club at the middle school, and also a K Kids Club at the Pecosin Elementary School. And over the years, we've been active in providing a math tutoring program at the middle school and a reading program at the Pecosin Primary School. So, we value that partnership, that working relationship, and we want to continue that into the future. So, without further ado, I'm going to present each of the principals with a $1,000 check so that you can use that in your resources to further promote positive learning and advancement of our students and our teachers. So, the first one goes to our primary school principal, Ms. Janet Harper. And Ms. Barbara Wood, principal of the elementary school. And Mr. Todd Pirelli. And the principal of our high school, Mr. Brandon Ratliff. I'd be remiss if I don't mention, Kiwanis is a global organization of volunteers dedicated to improving the world, one child and one community at a time. Our motto is "Serving Children of the World." We meet every Tuesday morning at Tabernacle with breakfast being served by the brouhaha patch, and we also have meetings on Thursday evenings, 1st Thursday and 3rd Thursday of the month, at 7:00 at the Anna's Pizza. So, we welcome you to come and visit us anytime and see what type of activities we engage in and what type of community service we try to accomplish. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Evans, and on behalf of the school board, I would like to thank you and all of the Kiwanis for what they do for not only the schools but for the community in general. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, why, Dr. Carter heads to the mic. I'm going to ask our four principals to come back up to the front, please. I've asked each of our principals to come forward because our school division this year was recognized as being a highly distinguished Title I school division. The Virginia Board of Education recognized us for that because we exceeded all state and federal accountability benchmarks for two consecutive years, for having all schools fully accredited for two consecutive years, and for achieving average pass rates in English and mathematics at or above the 85th percentile. This award is a tribute to all of the work done by our administrators, teachers, and other faculty and staff in our schools. Please join me in congratulating our schools for this accomplishment. Again, thank you and congratulations to all of our staff. That is the second year in a row that we've been recognized by the state for that, and that really is an accomplishment for our school division. Next, I'd like to take the chance to recognize Pecosin High School cheerleaders. Our cheerleaders took 3rd place in their VHSL 3A Division State Championship. A season highlight for them was a 1st-place tie with TAB High School, also for the Bay Rivers District. At this time, I'm going to ask our cheerleaders, our state 3rd-place winners, to come forward and stay as they get up here, so we'll get a picture of all of you once we've got everybody up here. First, I'd like to ask our coaches, who I know put in a lot of work with our young women this season, to come forward. Our head coach, Ms. Julie Edwards. And our assistant coach, Ms. Donna Buzanas. If Reeann Britt would please come forward, one of our members of our girls. She couldn't make it tonight, we'll get her award too. Or Sarah Brown. Kayla Convert. Destiny Dudley. Brooke Ely here. Greer Edwards. Skylar Flynn. Melissa Frazier. Ashley Healy. Taylor Hirsch. Ashley Hodgeson. Cameron Jackson. Whitney Johns. Caroline Kersey. Hannah Mahanes. Haley Norvo. Sydney Paul. Heather Pullen. Anna Sealy. Carissa Smith. Kayla Walker. Hannah Westfall. Again, I want to congratulate all of you on your effort. I have to say, I had the absolute pleasure to watch our girls perform, and they do a fantastic job and represent our school so well. So, please, while we're lining them up for the picture, if you could just join me one time and more time in congratulating our girls for their 3rd-place state finish. And I see lots of cameras, so this will take a second. And parents, while they're doing this, so that you know, this is broadcast on our TV channel, will rerun, but also, we will get a copy of this on our internet site, so families from across the country can see this once we get it loaded, so, thank you.
And this time, we'll break for intermission. Next, we'll have presentations and reports. First up, financial update with Mr. Bowen.
Good evening, Dr. Carter, school board members, and Dr. Parrish. There's not a lot happening in the budget world this time of year, so what I wanted to do this evening is talk to you about the state budget calculation tool and the importance of the work that, the importance for the work that we do to prepare the PCPS operating budget. The budget calculation tool is published by the Virginia Department of Education, and it outlines the state funding for K-12 education. Calculation tools are published whenever a budget is released, approved, or finalized. So, in a typical year, we'll see at least five calculation tools. There'll be one for the governor's proposed budget, one for the House-proposed, one for the Senate-proposed budget, and then one that's generated after the General Assembly has approved a budget. And then, there's a final calculation tool published in late May or early June, once the March 31st average daily membership is reported, and the sales tax and lottery revenue can reasonably be verified. The calculation tools presents the funding in four major categories, which are the standards of quality, incentive and categorical programs, and lottery programs. This is, this is the calculation tool. It's a comprehensive Excel workbook, and what I'm showing you here is just one of the worksheets, but there are about 15 additional worksheets behind this one that provides more of the details to support these numbers. Let me begin by pointing out a few of the details, important issues or details on the slide. Here, the screen arrow is highlighting a yellow text box, and as I mentioned, we'll, we see multiple calculation tools during the budget cycle. What this is telling us is these are projected payments for FY '15 and '16. They're based on the 2014 Special Session of the General Assembly as of June 12, 2014. Now, if this was the governor's budget, then it would state that this is the governor's proposed budget and would provide the date that budget was released. I want to point out and emphasize that these are projected payments. These are not actual payments. We won't know what our actual state funding will be until we see the final calculation tool in late May or early June. The calculation tool provides funding for all school divisions. So, here, this red arrow is indicating that we have selected Pecosin City Schools. There's a drop-down box to the right that allows the user to select any school division. The blue arrow, the blue arrow here is pointing to the local composite index for PCPS, and it's indicating that our current LCI is 38.95%. And as I mentioned in my presentation last month, this is one of the major factors in determining state and the required local funding. And just as a reminder, as our LCI increases, state funding decreases, and the burden to make up the loss for that state funding falls on the local government, and this has been the case for PCPS for the past six years. This yellow arrow indicates the average daily membership or enrollment, although ADM and enrollment are not synonymous. And let me just make the distinction. Enrollment is the number of students that are actually enrolled in Pecosin City Schools. The average daily membership is that enrollment figure, less those students that may be placed in an alternative program, transitioning students that start with us and later move out of the division. And it also includes the enrollment, the daily enrollment for each students. So, it's how many students are attending daily. So, these are referred to as deductions, and all are used to determine our average daily membership. School divisions are funded on the average daily membership and not enrollment, and that's important to note, and it's important that students are in attendance every day because this will ultimately impact our funding. ADM is one of the major components of the calculation tool. This tool comes to us from VDOE with VDOE's projected enrollment. However, we have a process for determining our ADM, and we have found that our projections are more accurate, and that enables us to prepare a more accurate budget document. The orange arrow here, the orange arrow here would be where we would change VDOE's ADM number and then our own number. And finally, the white arrow indicates the fiscal year for funding. This calculation tool provides two years of budget data that's based on the biennial budget approved by the General Assembly, and for each year, it reflects the state share and the required local share. And I'll point out, where you, we see the white arrow, and it's just above that light blue shaded area. If everything remains the same, all of the budget variables, the ADM remains the same, and the only thing that we change is our local composite index. What we would see is we would see a shifting from the state column to the local column, and that's where the state provides less funding, and then that burden then falls upon the local government to provide additional dollars. This next slide focuses on the standards of quality, or SOQ, programs. Total funding for SOQ programs represents about 95% of our state funding and includes SOQ-funded positions and support positions through the basic aid. It also details funding for specific programs such as vocational, gifted, special, remedial education, and then also the associated benefits for those SOQ-funded positions. I've highlighted two items on this slide, textbooks and remedial summer school. And note under the textbook, it states that this is split-funded, and then it refers you to the lottery section, and I'll get to that in a moment. As we approach the General Assembly session, we'll be largely focused on the FY '16 budget. However, the General Assembly will be considering revisions to our current budget, FY '15. And typically, what will happen here is that the state will have updated its revenue forecast for the current year. And when this happens, there's often a shifting of the programs from one category, from SOQ to possibly another category like lottery funds. So, for example, if lottery revenues are increased as a result of this reforecast, then we could see a shifting of the textbook funds and the remedial summer school, the two items that I've highlighted here, from the SOQ program to the lottery program. So, that doesn't indicate necessarily a budget reduction, it just merely indicates a shifting of funds. There are more funds available in lottery, and that works well for the state. We don't, we don't get any more funds, we don't lose any funds, but the state gains that general fund revenue. This next slide shows the funding for our incentive and categorical programs. This is, these two programs represent about 2% of our total funding, state funding. Highlighted on the slide is our state technology grant for about $154,000. I highlight this just to point out that this is our primary source of funding to replace and maintain our instructional technology and computer lab equipment. And lastly, we have the lottery funding. And one of the things I wanted to mention about lottery funds, we often hear from the community or general public about lottery funds. What happened to the lottery funds? I thought the lottery funds were going to save the schools. I thought the lottery funds were going to save the schools or fund the schools sufficiently. And in reality, what's happened is that, you know, lottery dollars represent about 3 percent of our state funding. So the majority of K-12 funding still comes from the general fund and sales tax revenue. Second, when the lottery legislation was passed, the state simply used this new source of revenue as a means to supplant general funds. So as we had new lottery dollars, what the state did was they gave us the lottery dollars, and then they took away general fund money from us. So it was not money that was to supplement us, but only to supplant us. And there are two items I've highlighted on this slide. The first is regional tuition for special education, and represents about 40 percent of our lottery funding. This is a reimbursement to the school division for the cost of special education children that attend New Horizons Regional Education Center. And this reimbursement does not reflect the full cost of New Horizons, but only the state share. The second item highlighted again is textbooks, which are, again, split funded between SOQ funding and lottery funding. In my example, on the SOQ slide, I mentioned if lottery funds were to increase, we might see textbooks from SOQ and possibly remedial summer school from SOQ be shifted to the lottery funds. Well, if the opposite occurred and lottery revenues were actually less than forecast, then what we might see here is we might see the elimination of lottery dollars, either reduction or elimination of lottery dollars for textbooks by the state. So where do we, what do we anticipate and expect for FY 16? We anticipate that the governor's budget will be released on December 20th. We don't have a specific date when that will happen, but I believe is required to release a budget on or before June, December 20th. Shortly thereafter, VDOE will release a calculation tool based on the governor's proposed budget, and then my staff and I will begin to analyze that data. And then based on the news and information that we received thus far, we are anticipating reductions in funding for FY 16. K-12 education was not cut in FY 15, however, there is still a budget gap that must be closed, and we understand that K-12 education will be a part of that solution. And, and this reductions that we anticipate in FY 16, this will be in addition to any reductions that we'll have to account for as a result of declining enrollment or for cost increases for things such as health insurance. So we are looking at, yet again, another challenging budget season. And that concludes my report this evening.
Can I ask a question?
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
What is the purpose of having five tools at various stages in the process? How dramatically do they change?
Sometimes they can dramatically change. When we were going through the budget crisis of 2010, 11, 12, we were seeing significant changes between what the governor was proposing and what the General Assembly ended up approving. But what, what happens is that each body, the governor, and then the House and the Senate, each have their take at the budget. They each, an opportunity present their own form of budget. So each time there are changes, the state then provides us with revised calculation tool. And then behind that are the changes that the General Assembly or the governor has, has provided. So it's, it's very, like you said, it's a very comprehensive workbook. It takes time, once these budgets are released, to go through all of the pages and to understand exactly the details and see where the changes are being made and how that might impact our overall budget.
It does also help us when talking to legislators if we, when we get those, so that I can actually say to them, you know, as soon as we can calculate, this is what your budget means for us. And when we're talking about cutting, it means we're cutting, you know, X number of dollars. So it is helpful to us. While it's a lot of work for Mr. Bowen and his staff, it enables us to actually be able to say, this is what it's going to mean for us if this is the budget that's passed, so.
Well, one of the significant things that we deal with when the budget, when we receive the Calc tool, let's just say on the SOQ slide, it had benefits that were there listed. One of them was for VRS retirement. So if there's an increase in that VRS retirement rate, then the state provides us additional money. But they, the money they provide us is only for those SOQ-funded positions that the state funds. We, as all school divisions, have more staff above the SOQ minimal funded positions. So then we have to go through our own documents, and then we have to adjust retirement rates for the other staff that's not, that's not included. And those are coming from local dollars, not from state dollars.
And since you brought up SOQ, I would like to remind everybody, I have no idea where the state came up with the standards of quality, but the quality standards that they set for education are incredibly low. I don't know of a school system who could operate on just what the state says is needed to run a school system. It's absurd, in my opinion. So the, the funding there for those positions is minimal. It doesn't come close to covering what's really needed to run a school system. Anybody else, questions or comments there?
I just have a question. How often is the LCI computed?
The LCI, excuse me, the LCI is updated every two years, and it's updated just before the biennial budget. So it was updated last November, just before the biennial budget came out, and we have that rate for two years. So next November, this time, we'll have another LCI update.
Okay, thank you.
So, so the tools, they'll ultimately end up, you'll ultimately end up with one? Is that right, that you have to, they say, okay, this is the final one? Is that, is that correct?
Well, we'll end up with a final, I'm sorry, a final calculation tool in late May. So it's not until that point that we really are able to fine-tune what our state funding's going to be. And it can change. And like I said, during the budget crisis in the 10, 11, and 12, we would see numbers change 50,000, 75,000 from what we anticipated after the session, General Assembly session ended. So it's, it's not as extreme at these times, but the numbers are fluid. They do, they do change. And it's largely dependent upon, at that point, the student enrollment, our ADM. And it's also dependent upon the revenue forecast, that the revenue for lottery, sales tax, and general fund revenues haven't met what the General Assembly members have forecasted. So if, as long as we're meeting those revenue targets, then we should have no problem. But the problem has been during, during those years that the revenue was all over the place, so it was hard really to, you know, get an accurate number for those sources.
So the ADM, the one that the state projected, I believe, was 2075? I couldn't read the one that you said was more accurate that we use.
Actually, let me, let me go back to that. Here we go.
The third, yeah, that was it.
Yes, the 2075, that is for FY 2015. That's actually our number.
Oh, okay.
The, the state number, if I recall correctly, was about 285. It was about 10 students more, which would have meant roughly $45,000 to $50,000 more that the state had us receiving. So by using a more conservative figure, a more accurate figure, and I can tell you, we are right at this figure right now. We're, I mean, we've never hit it dead on, but we were actually at 2, 2075 students for ADM.
Okay. Now, the $154,000 a year that I saw in there somewhere for technology?
Yes. That's a, that's a state technology grant, and the state issues bonds every year to fund this program. Every school division receives the same funding formula. It's $26,000 per school and $50,000 for the division. So I know we have talked about, we had a consolidation committee. If we ever decided to go down that road, we would actually lose some of our technology money because of that, because it's based on buildings.
$26,000.
$26,000.
Yeah. Do, do we ever go over that budget-wise, Oz, for technology?
This is a constant source of funding. This hasn't changed in recent memory.
So...
But as we, as we have reduced our budget, and technology has seen reductions in the budget, this has been the one primary and consistent source of funding for our equipment and technology plan. And we, through the course of our budget cutting, we, Dr. Colley, Dr. Cataldo, Mr. Cachamilo have been able to do things with technology that have actually brought efficiencies to the school division, and it actually saved us money. So we're usually utilizing the dollars that we have very effectively and efficiently to not only save us money, but to improve the overall systems and business operations of the school division.
Okay.
I can say that on the Pecos and Education Foundation, some of the grants that teachers have applied for do involve some technology, so we've received some funding through them that has supported our technology.
Does anybody else have questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much. That was very informative. Next up, our instructional update with Dr. Colley.
Good evening, Dr. Carter, members of the school board, Dr. Parrish. This evening, my instructional update covers arts education in Pecos and City Public Schools. I have to tell you, our teachers were more than generous in their responses and in sharing all the great things happening in arts education in Pecos, and so my remarks tonight just highlight those responses. Our teachers expressed their thankfulness for the opportunity to be able to emphasize the value of art education for our children. I will begin in the area of visual arts. All of the art teachers in Pecos and schools showcase our students' talents in their own classrooms and in the community throughout the year. They began this year with their annual student art exhibit at the Pecos and Seafood Festival, where each school was represented, including every student enrolled in a fine arts class at Pecos and High School. The art teachers work hard all year to display student artwork as much as possible. They like to bring students notice and recognition for all their hard work while fostering the concept of art appreciation throughout our schools. This year, all four schools have special projects planned. All the schools participate in March Youth Art Month with the display here in the city library. The show is in its 10th year and is part of a nationwide celebration of the arts programs in public schools. Each school also hosts an arts festival night. These nights have become a huge success for each of the schools, including art exhibits, music, and theatrical programs. Last year, the first annual senior art show at the high school was introduced and became the hit of Senior Awards Night. The art teachers invite you and our community members to view our works of art in the schools throughout the year. As one teacher put it, "As an art teacher, I see firsthand how art can give students a feeling of achievement and success. The art room is a place where all students can feel accepted, because a work that is created through pure enjoyment, even if it's imperfect, is still art. There is no right or wrong way in art, only learning through creating." Next, I'll share some about our music programs. The kindergarten through fifth grade music classes have been busy this fall, learning to match pitch and, to notes, and to keep a steady beat. They do this through engaging songs and fun activities using musical instruments. You'll remember last year, the elementary school orf ensemble performed for us mid-year. And this group is off to a great start this year as well. Later this year, fifth grade students will perform a musical about the Thirteen Colonies at the elementary school. The middle school will showcase their learning next month in band and choral concerts. And five of our middle school chorus members made district chorus this year. The girls' ensemble from the middle school will also perform at this year's street lighting ceremony at City Hall. The Pecos and High Islander Marching Band is a seven-time Virginia honor band, receiving first-place music, first-place drum majors, second-place band, second-place marching, second-place GE at the Warhol Classic last month, receiving an excellent rating at the State Marching Festival, and earning first-place band and first-place drum majors at the Warrior Classic this month. This fall's show was entitled "After Midnight by the Dark of the Moon." Choral music students at the high school also have full performance and competition schedules. All the choruses will perform at the Winter Chorus Concert next month at Tab High School. Sound Station, the show choir, will be performing at Barnes and Noble on December 17th to help out the Key Club with its fundraiser. Sound Station will also be performing for the Kiwanis Club, and Sound Station with the harmonets will be performing for the retired teachers next month. In addition, 27 students will be performing in all district chorus this February at Woodside High School, and that's the highest number of students that have made this chorus in eight years. And last, I will turn to our drama programs in our schools. At the middle school, Drama VII will be putting on their performance this week, Thursday, November 20th, at 8 o'clock in the morning. Morning? All right. According, just checking. According to the teacher, the students have adapted a selection of children's books into screenplays. This is entirely the students' work, from the adaptation to the set design to set directions and the performance. The high school drama class is currently participating in Arts for All at the Ferguson Center for Performing Arts. Students are provided the opportunity to see select shows for free throughout the school year. Each student can receive up to four free tickets to see performances like Jekyll and Hyde or A Christmas Carol. The whole class will also attend the Nutcracker Ballet on a field trip next month. Finally, many drama students also volunteered their time participating as ghouls for the Pecos and Museum's Pecos and Haunts last month. So, arts are an important part of our schools, both in the class and outside of the class. Our teachers attest to the importance of arts, and so do our business leaders. I'll leave you with this thought from Joseph M. Callahan, Director of Corporate Communications at Xerox Corporation. He said, "Arts education aids students in skills needed in the workplace: flexibility, the ability to solve problems and communicate, the ability to learn new skills, to be creative and innovative, and to strive for excellence." Thank you for the opportunity this evening to share with you about some of our arts education, and this concludes my update.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions, comments? They really do some phenomenal work.
They do.
Some of the art that's displayed, you know, around the community and the schools is wonderful. So thank you very much, Dr. Colley. Mr. Melton, could you take us through our consent agenda, please?
Okay. Tonight, we have the approval of minutes of the October regular meeting and work session enclosed. The approval of minutes of special meeting from October 21st enclosed. The approval of financial reports enclosed. The approval of personnel action enclosed. Authorization to dispose of surplus property enclosed. And finally, authorization to change appropriations in accordance with attached requests enclosed.
Excuse me, thank you, sir. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Ms. Reimers, could you please call for a vote?
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sedner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of 6-0.
Thank you. Next up, matters for consideration. One item on the agenda, consideration of approval of the second reading of Change to Policy Manual 6-4.4, Promotion and Retention. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, you had this for first reading at our October meeting and have attached to the reading file the changes. This is just to ensure that our policy aligns with all of the requirements put out by the Virginia Department of Education, and specifically with graduation requirements. Your program of studies was already aligned with it. We're just bringing this forward to you as a policy change. So we recommend approval of the revision to Policy 6-4.4.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Does anybody have any questions, comments on this one? Pretty straightforward.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Reimers. Could you please call for a vote?
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sedner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of 6-0.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment tonight?
There were none. We do not.
Thank you. Dr. Parrish, would you like to kick off our communication?
Yes, first, I'd just like to recognize that three of our board members, I believe, at their chairs may have their certificates. They were recognized by the Virginia School Board Association for attending some professional development activities, and that was Ms. Sedner, Mr. Hux, and Mr. Melton. If they're not there, we'll definitely get them to you. But I just want to thank you for attending some of those training opportunities, and that certainly helps our school division as well. Just a reminder, Mr. Bowen did a great job of presenting the budget and where we are likely headed. I was glad that there was, again, mention of the issue that we have with the lottery dollars. Something to remember is before all this budget cutting started, that lottery dollar, well, rather, the lottery funding was actually initially put forward to help school divisions with construction costs and capital costs, and that assisted our city because we were able to provide some of that funding to offset some of our debt service. And that money is no longer available for that. As he said, it's now actually being used to supplant general funds that used to go to fund schools in other ways. So while we, we get more lottery dollars, the initial intention of schools receiving lottery dollars was not to use to supplant other funding we would have, but rather to augment what we had and help, especially... what we had and help, especially in the area of construction and school facility issues, which, you know, we will be talking about your capital improvement plan as we move into the work session. So as we know, we're just going to wait to see what we hear from both the Governor and then as we move through the General Assembly this winter. As we approach Thanksgiving next week, I hope that all of our faculty and staff and employees have a wonderful Thanksgiving break. I know everybody's worked hard. Can't believe we're more than a quarter through the school year at this point to have such a great first quarter of the school year. And also to thank you, board members, for the time that you put in on behalf of our school division. So I do hope everybody has a very restful holiday next week and comes back ready to go before we move on to our next break. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Rollins?
I don't have anything.
Ms. Hux?
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Tonight, our student representative, Ms. Sophie McDevitt, is also a member of the Pecosin High School Lady Islanders Basketball Team. She is participating in the first scrimmage of the season. So best wishes go to the Lady Islanders Basketball Team. Ms. McDevitt did collect the information for me to read tonight. I will communicate that at this time. And thank you to Ms. Harper for providing the information on the Pecosin Primary School. November is a busy month at Pecosin Primary. The students are busy learning about our veterans by participating in Operation Caring Classroom. Operation Caring Classroom is an annual education initiative that increases awareness, appreciation, and support among children from military families across the United States. Students are learning the meaning of Veterans Day and about the sacrifices that service members and their families make each day. In conjunction, students are constructing a hero's wall by contributing family photos of veterans and active-duty personnel. On another note, the Pecosin Primary is hosting Family Literacy Night this Thursday evening. Parents and students are invited to attend this informative and fun-filled evening celebrating literacy. Thank you, Dr. Wood, for providing the information on the elementary school. On October 30th, 5th graders catapulted pumpkins they had weighed and predicted how far the pumpkins would travel.
How far did they go?
I do not have that information. On November 13th, Pecosin Elementary School celebrated Thanksgiving, and there were many happy faces and full bellies as students and their families shared a yummy lunch together. On November 14th, parents enjoyed a dessert theater where the PTO hosted a Free Family Night of Fun with cake and then a presentation by the Peninsula Children's Theater Group. There are many budding actors and actresses at Pecosin Elementary School. This Wednesday, November 19th, are the first-quarter awards assemblies. Please check the school website for a list of classes and the times of the assemblies for the different classes. Students receive certificates for A and AB honor rolls. 4th grade classes are very excited about their field trip to Jamestown on Friday. And I remember very well my field trip to Jamestown when I was in 4th grade. It was a good time. And thank you, Mr. Pirelli, for providing the information on the middle school. 299 students participated in the Honor Roll Ice Cream Socials this past Friday. The 7th grade drama class will put on a performance in which they have made a screenplay out of a selection of children's books, November 20th at 8:00 a.m. The Winter Band Concert will be held on Thursday, December 4th at 7:00 p.m. There will be a morning performance at 8:00 a.m. The Winter Chorus Concert will be held on Thursday, December 11th at 7:00 p.m. And thank you to Mr. Ratliff for providing the information on the high school. The Pecosin High School FCA Club will be sponsoring Operation Christmas Child again this year. And for people that want to participate, that's a very easy and inexpensive way to do so. I encourage everybody to do that. PHS will be participating in Cookies Because We Care again this year. These cookies will be distributed to the local military men and women who cannot be home for the holidays. Pay close attention to this statistic.
Okay.
Since 2007, Pecosin City Public Schools has donated 95,016 cookies to the Langley Officers' Spouses Club. That is a boatload of cookies.
That's a bunch of them.
I can't conceive what 95,000 cookies even looks like. It's a bunch, and gratitude to all those that participate. The PHS SCA is currently holding a food drive for the Pecosin Food Pantry and for the sports updates. Winter sports practices begin on November 10th. This Saturday, November 22nd at 2:00 p.m., our football team will host the quarterfinals of the Region 3A game against Petersburg, the Go Bulls. Boys' cross-country team placed 11th in the state tournament over the weekend, with Matt Casey placing 20th and Clint Gault placing 24th. Our field hockey team had a very successful season. The girls were in the conference 25, the girls were the conference 25 champions this year. Our competition cheer team had a very successful season. The girls tied for the Bay Rivers District Championship. They were the conference 25 champions. They were the 3A East runner-up and placed third in the state competition, and we recognize them tonight. Our volleyball team also had a very successful season and finished with a record of 14-9. And the sailing team placed 12th in the M.A.S.S.A. Regional Championship for the Mid-Atlantic Region and placed fourth in the state competition. And that concludes the comments for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That was a bunch of them. Ms. Whitaker, you're up.
Thank you. I hate to follow that. Many thanks to the Kiwanis Club for the gifts they presented tonight, the funds that they gave to our principals, schools. It's wonderful. I understand, I believe also the Education Foundation recently also presented some checks. So many, many thanks to them. I'm often, I'm humbled by the participation of members of this community, whether they are members of these groups or they help support these groups. And also just the volunteers that go into the schools. They might spend a day in the school, they might spend a month in the school, but it's huge what this community does for education, and it is quite impressive. I was able to attend the improv performance that Mr. Hux mentioned at the elementary school on Friday that was put on by the PTO. It was a lot of fun. The children got very involved in it. There are a lot of budding actors and actresses out there, and they were so anxious, they kept moving up on the floor, and the actors had to stop and ask everybody to move back, and then you'd watch them move forward again. They wanted to just be so involved, and it was wonderful to see. I also attended the Thanksgiving lunch at PES, and it was yummy. And a lot of credit goes to our food service workers. It was delicious. It really was a great meal. Everyone seemed to have a wonderful time. It got quite loud in that cafeteria, so a lot of respect and shout-outs to the staff of the elementary school and, in fact, every cafeteria we have in Pecosin. And I would just like to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving and look forward to seeing everyone at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Sedner?
Dr. Parrish and I attended WHRO on Veterans Day last Tuesday, November 11th. It was a special meeting where the Secretary of Education spoke, and unfortunately, she echoed what Mr. Bowen spoke about, that FY '16 did not look good for the budget. So it was interesting seeing her and hearing her, but unfortunately, it was very disappointing to hear that news. And I would also like to echo and thank the Kiwanis for giving the principals that money. I have no doubt it's appreciated, and it's very appreciated, all the work that they do for the schools.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Melton?
Yes, I want to drop back to our pledge to the flag and our inspirational reading. I just hope that we're lucky enough to have Joseph as our athletic director in about 15 years, and that hope is teaching some creative writing for us. And I'll urge these two young folks to keep up the good work and to learn from some of the best, meaning their current teachers. How's done? So we have some good teachers in Pecosin, and they've got some good role models, and maybe they'll just return to us one day and do those jobs for us. Second item is the Special Education Advisor Committee. The next meeting will be on Thursday afternoon, December 11th. It meets from 4:30 to 5:30 p.m., and it'll be in Pecosin Elementary School in Room C200. The topic this time has not been announced yet, so come on out and see what develops, and you'd be surprised.
Thank you, sir. Again, thanks to the Kiwanis and for all they do, not just for the school systems, but for the community in general. Everyone does a wonderful job. And Coach Chapazie, congratulations on the first-ever trophy for field hockey, high school field hockey. As Mr. Hux alluded to, they won the Colonial Rivers Conference 25 Championship, and they did a wonderful job. Lots of excitement out there on the field. I had the opportunity to attend the State of the City for the City of Pecosin. There was a meeting for, it was a regional meeting, and the staff at City Hall did a wonderful job of putting everything together. It was a fabulous event, very well organized, very well-run, and the mayor knocked it out of the park for highlighting everything that Pecosin is about. It was just, it was a really, really good event, and it just, you just swelled up with pride, sitting there listening to everything that Pecosin does, all that we're about. And so kudos to them. I hope everybody has a wonderful Thanksgiving, enjoy your time off, and everybody has something to be thankful for, so zero in on that and look for all the positives, and especially living here in this city and in this wonderful country that we have, where hopefully, we don't take our freedoms for granted, and that we cherish that, and that we are thankful every day for the veterans who served to preserve the freedoms, for the founding fathers who had the foresight to put those freedoms in place, and for the citizens of this nation who continue to appreciate those freedoms that we have. Speaking of Thanksgiving, I would like to thank, and I typically don't do this, but I'm going to do it anyway, I would like to thank my wife for not getting upset with me for being here at School Board, because today is my 25th wedding anniversary.
Wow.
So she, and that, I think, speaks volumes about the woman that she is and how much she supports me. So she knows how much School Board means to me, so...
Buy some cheese cake on the way home.
Very, very thankful, very thankful. I have a lot to be thankful for. So that concludes our communications. Do we have any material for Board Review?
We do not.
With that, we will adjourn to the work session.